Working in the room. You're not getting that noise?
Hi, Chris. I think everyone might be on mute.
Thank you. Perfect. I just needed to hear a voice.
Yeah. I am getting ready to start, but Mr. Susan is still wrapping up with Dr. Mullins, so I was just trying to give them a chance to break.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, Ms. Campbell.
How are you guys doing?
I am well. Thank you for asking. We're continuing with modifications to our workshop processes to address health and safety concerns as a result of the COVID-19 emergency. As allowed by Executive Order 20-91 issued by Governor DeSantis, this meeting is being held virtually. The public may join us via our usual streaming channels. I ask for Ms. Escobar to call Board role, and then we can verify staff members who are joining us via Skype.
Thank you. Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mrs. Campbell?
Present.
Mrs. Duskovich?
Present.
Ms. McGoole?
Present.
Mr. Susan? He may be having some technical difficulties.
Pam, where is he located? I can go help him.
He is in the room off of the mail, between the mailroom and Lab 4 or 712.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm going to go ahead and confirm what other staff members are joining us, if that's okay. Ms. Archer? Mr. Cheatham just went to help Mr. Susan. Ms. Klein? She's not here. Mr. Gibbs?
Present.
Ms. Han?
Present.
Ms. Lesinski? Ms. Moore?
I'm here.
Dr. Mullins?
I'm here.
Mr. Novelli?
I'm here, Pam.
Mr. Reed? Dr. Sullivan? And Dr. Thady?
I'm here.
I think we're done with the finding out who's joining us.
Thank you, Ms. Escobar. All right. The purpose of today's meeting is to hold a work session on Policies 5771, 7440.01, 8406, 8410, 8410.01, and 8420. Robin Novelli, our Chief Operating Officer, is the cabinet member responsible for the revision of these security policies, so I will turn it over to him at this time. I remind board members that this is our opportunity to recommend changes to the policies. The public will have a chance to publicly address the revisions on June 16 during a rule development workshop. Mr. Novelli?
All right. Good afternoon. Thank you, Ms. Belford. I'm going to try to capture my screen and share my desktop here on Skype. All right. Can you see my desktop?
Yes, we can.
All right. So what I've called up here is the latest version of 5771 that Pam put out, I think just today. As a matter of fact, there was a slight modification there, one word that we needed to capture that had been deleted. Something else I'd like to point out is that the Rule Development Workshop and the School Board Meeting Information date of June 16 is modified on this, and also the final school board meeting approval for this would be on 6/30 June 30. And so that's an adjustment from what we saw on here just a few days ago. So we'll start with 5771, and probably the best thing to do is to go down to the redline version. And what we've taken here is some language recommended from Neola, and we've also have some sections that we have modified a little bit to be a little more specific for our public schools. In paragraph B, this was a change. It was just found today. This word "random" had been deleted, but it actually been completely deleted instead of struck through. And so that was changed to read "A search upon reasonable suspicion that a prohibited or illegally possessed substance or object is contained therein." A couple of other small minor changes there in that particular paragraph. This section down in paragraph C talks about the training and experience as a factor that governs search along with a number of other possibilities. An opportunity to talk with Sherri Bowman today, who is one of the leaders of leading learning, and she, for a number of years, and now Lena Wybelt, provide training to our administrators on the proper methodologies for conducting searches with students. In paragraph G, we have some language about the feasibility of having at least one person present who is of the same gender of the student, although when they do trainings with the administrators, these searches are not something where we pat down students. We certainly don't do anything like a strip search or anything of that nature, but ask students to empty out their pockets and take the items out of their book bag or that type of thing. Then in paragraph G is a whole new paragraph that deals with Arcanines that are specifically trained to detect the presence of drugs and paraphernalia. Again, some minor language here. We included law enforcement officer. And then some important language that we added here at the top of the next page about, let me read this in context here. "A search prompted by the reasonable suspicion that health and safety are immediately threatened will be conducted with as much speed and dispatch as may be required to protect persons and property, and consent is not a requirement. If a search is for weapons, the district's active assailant response procedure shall be relied upon as a guide. Refusal, refusal, sorry, of a reasonable suspicion search will be presumptive confirmation of violation to be handled pursuant to disciplinary guidelines of the Code of Student Conduct." Important item in paragraph I is that the principle is not to take custody or control of an illegal or dangerous substance, but that should be done by the school resource officer or a local law enforcement officer. And there's a paragraph J there that deals with breath tests for blood alcohol. So what questions does the board have, or what other comments would you like to include in this?
So board members, if it's okay with you, I think I'll just kind of go through the list and give each of you an opportunity to speak, just so we're not speaking over each other. Ms. Campbell, did you want to weigh in since you're our lead in the alphabet?
No, thank you. Not at this time.
All right. Ms. Duskovich?
Yeah, I have several. I've been spending a lot of time on this policy the last few days, so I have several comments, questions, concerns to share with you all. Let's see. My first overarching concern is that the parent is never mentioned anywhere in this policy, and I really would urge us to add some kind of parental notification. I think maybe we even need to have a discussion if that's something we would like to happen before a child is searched, especially if it's not an intimate threat of a weapon or if it's something that we're comfortable with after. But I feel strongly that the role of the parent is important in this whole process, and at minimum, we need to notify the parent. I talked to Dr. Sullivan, and she said that's usually our process. It does happen, but I think it's important enough to be noted somewhere in our policy. That's the first thing. The second thing is I looked at other school districts' policies, several other districts, Orange, Sarasota, Seminole, there's a lot of them. And everyone that I looked at had a part, a paragraph in their policy for metal detectors. And not all of those districts use metal detectors, but it's in there, kind of like our canine one is, in case it's needed. And I don't mean a metal detector. I think it would be a big deal, obviously, if we put in full metal detectors for the entranceway. But wands, I know at some point we had some waving wands, and we considered using them. We might want to consider getting a paragraph in here that allows us, just like with the Canines, to use metal detectors. And then the next thing that I want to address, and this is the last area, some other school districts have it spelled out. So under letter C, we talk about searching the person, and I think Mr. Novelli just said, "Well, we don't ever do strip searches," but we don't have that mentioned anywhere. We are not very detailed on what reasonable suspicion is. We are not. I just think, I think this leaves a lot of leeway for our employees to get in a lot of trouble. And so I've been trying to figure out how to address some of my concerns in the policy. Like, where's the line? Do you, are they allowed to ask the kid to take off a jacket, a shirt? Like, it's not clear in here. And, you know, are they allowed to ask them to take off a jacket for a cigarette? Or, you know, if they have a gun, absolutely, right? We want, we want to get in that gun right away. So I think it's very fuzzy here. And so I reached out to several people, and actually, Ms. Enval sent me what Orange County has, and it's in their Discipline Procedure Guide. So we do not have a, what's the word I'm looking for here? To go with this. Like, you know how we usually have a procedure to go along with a policy? We do not have a procedure, administrative procedure, that's what I was looking for. We do not have administrative procedures to go along this. So what we use is our Code of Student Conduct to kind of spell it out, which is not as detailed as, say, Orange County. So I'm going to forward you all after this, or, you know, even when I, when I'm done talking, what Ms. Enval sent me from Orange County for their Discipline Procedures Guide, which I think would be equivalent to our Code of Student Conduct. And there's literally three pages where it's very specific. It's very well laid out. And I spoke with Dr. Sullivan before this meeting, and she recommended that we consider adding that to our Code of Student Conduct, which I'm perfectly comfortable putting it there. I don't think all those details belong in the policy, but I would like you all to look at that and weigh in as they're updating the Code of Student Conduct, because it lays out if you can strip search, it lays out what entails reasonable suspicion. I just think we're leaving a lot of, our poor principals, right? They're not attorneys. They didn't go to law school. They're not law enforcement officers. I think they should be able to open a book or click on a link and see exactly what, what they're supposed to do. And that's everything at this point. Belford?
All right. Mr. Novelli, did you want to go ahead and respond to Ms. Duskovich's questions?
So Ms. Duskovich, remind me of your first item. You had several.
Well, the thing is, I didn't really have any questions, so I don't think that's fair to ask you to respond to the questions. I didn't really have any questions. I had more comments. My biggest concern was, the first one was parental notification, adding it to the actual policy. Do you have any thoughts or concerns with us doing that?
Well, I think I would lean on Dr. Sullivan's advice or Chris Moore's. You know, I can reach back to my experience as a principal, but it's been several years since then. But there are often times where trying to get ahold of a parent prior to dealing with various matters, as you pointed out, if it's a very serious matter, then that probably isn't going to be something we have time to do. On the other hand, sometimes there are just very simple things that, you know, Johnny comes down to Dean's office, and there's some item that is in his pocket, and they say, "You know, take that thing out of your pants pocket. Put that there on my desk." And, and the thing's already taken care of, and you're gone, and you're moved on to the next thing. So there's a wide range, what I'm trying to say in terms of scope. And so I think I would yield to Dr. Sullivan or Chris Moore in terms of where would we, what kind of a problem might it cause if we were to say to every administrator, "You must have the student's parents' permission before you ask them to empty out their pockets?"
I'll just jump in here real quick, Robin. This is Chris Moore. When we met, we talked about, we talked about adding procedures to this policy. We downloaded several examples of procedures for this, one of which is, number one, a documentation for the schools to keep track of the searches that they do and formalize the process. The other one is a consent to search form, which, you know, walks students through their rights prior to the search. So we can pull those back out. I think it belongs in procedures. I think, Ms. Duskovich, you're right. So we'll pull those back out and take a look at the things that we've already spoken about and be ready to present that to you.
Thank you. But did you address parental notification? And, Mr. Novelli, I am not absolutely advocating for before anything is done. I mean, maybe we want to have a discussion about this, where the board stands on it, even after notification. It just, it seems like the parent needs to be mentioned in this policy somewhere, playing a role in such a, it's search and seizure. It's important. It's a, it's a right.
Yeah. That is, that is included in the, in the, in the form that, the one form, and I can't remember where that form came from, but we all looked at it, and it was addressing the student's rights to refuse search as well as the parental notification part of it. So we do have that, and we can pull it back out and see if it, if we can put it into procedures.
Procedures, yes, but I'm interested in adding the parent only. And everything else, I said, yes, procedures, but I'm interested in adding the parent somewhere in the policy. Again, we need, you know, a couple more board members to weigh in on this. I might be on a solo island over here.
Ms. Belford, and may I? It's Stephanie.
Absolutely.
Hi. Thank you. Yeah, if I understand, Ms. Duskovich's priority objective is that it's really clear in our policy that after conducting a search, that the parents are notified. And I am entirely comfortable with that, because that is our expectation of our schools, and I think it's important for our parents to know that, and it being in the policy is a good sort of checks and balances. And we've been really clear with schools on that expectation. As Robin mentioned, prior is a whole different ballgame, and I definitely think there's too many circumstances that make prior permission, notification, consent really difficult, especially when we're dealing with emergency situations. But even if a school does a quick search over a stolen item, I expect the administration to call the parent in that case. And the guidelines that we have been following for many years are from the Attorney General's Office, if I'm citing that correctly, and we've been operating under their guidelines, which designate, like Ms. Moore mentioned, that there should be a log at which those things are tracked, and two parents need to be notified after the fact.
That is, yes, that's the exact document we were looking at. Thank you, Stephanie.
Yeah, thank you. That's, that's the one, that has been kind of our gold standard, and there are definitely some things missing. I think in the spirit of appropriate search and seizure, we're in a really good space. Where we're not probably in a good space is, as all of you have mentioned, just clarity around some of our expectations and it being in one spot. Again, those AG guidelines have been our, our gold standard, but I think we can work together to either in procedure or on the Student Code of Conduct. I mentioned that since Chris already opened up the revision period for next year, and we annually approve that versus policy that we don't annually approve. But I do think the parent thing can be easily added to the policy that once a search is conducted, and we have that language from that Attorney General document that I think we can easily add there.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Ms. Duskovich, are you comfortable with that on the parental notification aspect?
I am, yes.
Okay. The only thing that I would add, and I'll open it up for any other board member to add as well, and, Dr. Sullivan, feel free to weigh in. My only concern is if we make it mandatory that parents are contacted after a search occurs, and we are unsuccessful in getting in contact with parents, because I know oftentimes, parents don't respond to calls from the schools. I question respond to calls from the schools. I question if that puts our staff in jeopardy of policy violations. So, my thought is, maybe we make it a requirement that staff attempt to notify parents after a search and document those attempts. And that way, if we have parents that are unresponsive, we're not putting them in a pickle.
Ms. Belford, this is Ms. Duskovich, if I can. I've seen in other policies where it said reasonable attempts will be made to contact parents, and I'm comfortable with that. I mean, if the parent can't be, you know, pocket, then... But I think the word "reasonable" really does help.
Okay. I'm good with that. Any other board members want to weigh in on the inclusion of the reasonable attempt at parental notification post-search?
Ms. Belford, just so that you know, in the comment, in the conversation side, I posted the link to the AG Search and Seizure Guide for the schools in Florida, just that you guys had access to it.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. I appreciate that. I think, I haven't looked at it yet, but I think it's the same one that Mr. Gibbs sent out to us this morning. It sounds very similar as we're discussing it. So, board members, that is over there in the comment section, if you want to take a look.
Yeah, thank you, Chris, for interpreting what I was trying to say. And that has been the document we have utilized for all of our training.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Duskovich, you also brought up metal detectors. Was that something that you prefer included in policy, or was that something that you feel should be included elsewhere?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I just, I've seen that in every other county's policy that I pulled, under search and seizure. They have a paragraph, a numeral or a letter, about metal detectors. And I, you know, like I said, I followed up, and a lot of them don't have metal detectors. Some said they use that in case they want to use wands. I just, I kind of just want some feedback from you all. Do you think we should, while we're doing this, because, you know, the policy update process is three months long?
Right.
Do we want to put something in there now to include, in case we do decide at football games, we want to start wanding, or something of that nature?
Ms. Belford, if I may, Brian Neal, I think. Brian, you on the line?
I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir, we do. I believe we modified a board policy last fall that included language about metal detectors, didn't we not?
AP 7740B.
That's what I saw.
Say that again, sir?
AP 7740B. That's metal detectors.
That's an administrative procedure. We've added it underneath. Okay, I'll go check that out.
Okay. Ms. Duskovich, was there, I feel like there was a third issue that we potentially did not cover on your concerns on this policy. Was there a third one?
It was adding, you know, way more detail to our Code of Student Conduct under the expectations in this area. But I don't know that that's a discussion for right now, today. Dr. Sullivan and I discussed it offline. Maybe that's something each of us can discuss with her or with Ms. Moore. I did email you guys the Orange County document, if you want to take a look at that, page 97 on... Yeah, maybe that's just something that can be done offline.
Okay, perfect. Ms. McDougall, did you want to weigh in on this particular policy?
I have a couple questions. So, there's one. Thank you, Mr. Gibbs, for sending me information about reasonable searches, because that, to me, is so nebulous, but I appreciate that information. Also, I wanted to, do we give, in Section E, I think it was, we give advance warning to search lockers? Is that true, or am I reading that wrong, or that part? So, help me understand this a little bit better. So, we can conduct random searches, providing proper notices and posters in the locker area of each building. So, if we bring our canine dogs in, they know, like, the day before that they're coming?
I believe the proper notice, it says here, has been posted in locker areas. So, what you see, when you see lockers at a school, is a sign that's on the wall that says, "Lockers are subject to search."
Okay, that makes more sense to me. I just thought, okay, we're defeating the purpose if we're giving an advance warning that tomorrow we're doing this. And then, in Section H, so if a student says, "You know, you're not going to, you can't search me. No, I'm not doing it." So, we're just presuming right then they're guilty at that point. Is that correct?
Chris Moore, will you, can you address this section here that I'm highlighting?
Well, the conversation that was had around this was, you know, when we give the students the opportunity, following the guidelines that are in the Attorney General's document, to refuse the search, then what happens? And so, one of the options is to wait for the parent to come in and conduct the search then. But the final one is, you know, we're going to have some savvy kids and some savvy parents who understand very quickly that all they have to do is say no, and we're not going to catch them with whatever illegal substance they may or may not have brought with them. So, one of the ways to circumvent that is to go through a two-to-10-day hearing process. But it doesn't mean an automatic guilty verdict. That means that we're going to take the time to gather the evidence that led us to believe that a reasonable search, that we had reasonable suspicion to search to begin with. And if the preponderance of the evidence says that, yeah, he or she probably had something on them, then we would move forward in the hearing in that way. And if we did not, then the student would come back to the school. But by refusing to search, it should not immediately circumvent our process of control.
Thank you. And then, one last thing, is that when we talk about vehicles, we're including golf carts, bicycles, Vespas, anything that moves and considered as a vehicle? Are we considering everything?
I would assume so, yes.
Okay. Just checking. That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. McDougall. Mr. Susan, did you have any questions or comments on this particular policy?
Just looking at the blood testing that we have down there, and it's not in the Neola template, and it's not in our original template. I was looking at it, and it talks about giving the principal or the designee may arrange a breath test or a blood alcohol to be conducted on the student whenever the principal or designee is individual. Is that, are we solid there, that a principal or a teacher can administer a blood test or a blood alcohol breath test? I mean, I don't know. Like, that's, it was just my question where it came from. It wasn't in the original policy, and it wasn't in the Neola template, and I'm just making sure that we're, because we always try to go with what Neola says. I didn't know if we're okay there. Is this legal?
This is Paul. These policies are also sent to Neola, and they, I don't believe they had an issue with the blood alcohol test through a breathalyzer. If you have reasonable suspicion and they fill out the proper paperwork, I think you'd be fine.
Okay, so, because here's where I'm getting at. We had a recent, within the last year, I think, a situation where, you know, we could have had an opportunity to blood alcohol, I'm sorry, breathalyzer a student, and we didn't. And then it came into context of, is the people who are doing it qualified and all of that stuff? As long as you feel secure, I love it. I like the fact that we're going to do it. I just wanted to make sure it doesn't open us up for, if a principal or somebody else is administering it, that somebody's going to turn around and say, "Well, you don't have the specifications to do that. You don't have the right to do that." And then we get hung because there's some catch somewhere. So, as long as we're good there, that was my only concern.
I'm assuming that they would be bringing in the SROs to conduct the actual breath test based upon whatever reasonable suspicion that they had.
Sure. It just says a principal. So, now we're allowing the principal or a designee.
That's who, the principal's going to make the decision. If he has enough to say, "Yes, I think there's enough here that we need to test this student. You know, we found an empty liquor bottle sitting next to him out where he was eating lunch outside." He brings him into the office. I'm assuming at some point he's going to call the SRO, because I don't know if our principals actually have these devices, or if they're going to rely on...
No, and I think that you're right.
Yeah, so...
I don't think we've ever had a situation where a principal's administering a breath alyzer. It's just when it says, "The principal or designee may arrange for a breath test." As long as our, as long as the intent of this policy is that a principal or a designee will ask the SRO to administer, then that's, then I think we're very solid there. I was just concerned that this might be interpreted by our individuals to think that we actually would allow them to do it. That's all. And if that's not the intent, then we're good. Thank you.
Yeah, on the Neola template, fifth paragraph down, it's hard to find, because it's not in the same order as what we had at towards the end. But Neola did have language that was similar to that. And I can see Dr. Sullivan put in a few comments there. Dr. Sullivan, did you want to address that?
Nope. I think Mr. Susan, like, summed it up correctly, that our policy is written to say they make arrangements, not to administer it directly. This happens most often at things like homecoming and prom, when a student shows up under the influence. They're going to call in law enforcement to administer it, and, you know, the people that have the proper licensing.
Very good. Back to you, Ms. Belford.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Novelli. I had just a couple of questions. On Item B, the very last sentence, it said, "The board directs the school principal or designee to conduct a routine inspection at least annually of all such storage places." So, does that mean that we are telling them to inspect lockers, or does that mean that we are telling them to search lockers?
Yeah, what this is talking about, I believe, and this is language that comes from before, this isn't new language. But this would be, in practice, as a principal or assistant principal, we would check all the lockers in the summertime. We would open every locker, make sure there's nothing in it, turn the lock on backwards, that type of thing, to get ready for the new school year. And we would do that inspection in the summer.
Okay, thank you. And then, in Item C, one, two, three, four, five lines down, it starts with extent of the search will be governed by the training and experience of school authority. Just a small typographical thing there. It seems like it should be of a school authority, or the school authority, or an administrator, or...
Got it.
It just doesn't seem to flow there. And then, Item E, and I think I know the answer to the, but I just want to verify that I'm understanding it correctly. In the very first section at the top, we say that no student will be searched without reasonable suspicion. But then, in Item E, we say administrators are permitted to conduct a random search of any student's locker. So, is the difference there between random and reasonable suspicion, because one is the locker and one is the actual student?
That was my interpretation, yes, ma'am. And I think this leads towards the use of canines also.
Okay. And then, moving down to Item H, it seems a little fuzzy to me if consent is required, or if consent is not required. And I just want to clarify. So, if there's an immediate threat, we do not need consent. But if it is not an immediate threat to health and safety, then we must get consent before we can search a student?
I see your, I see your point, Ms. Belford. So, I would yield to those others that worked with me on this. What is our intent here? That consent is necessary in certain situations, but not in others, or, at the bottom line is, it's not necessary? And... Chris, can you speak to that?
Hey, this is Brian, too. I know Dr. Sullivan will have plenty to say here as well. We've had many conversations on this. So, obviously, when you have reasonable suspicion at the school level, consent is not needed. It seems that the district has, at least since I've been here, and probably longer, has always asked for consent first. Now, absent reasonable suspicion, then obviously, this is a consent search, absent that. But when you have reasonable suspicion, consent is not needed.
I am reading directly from the AG's report, and it says, "A properly conducted search pursuant to consent by a student is constitutionally permissible." It goes on to say, "The Fourth and Fourteenth Amendments require that consent not be coerced by explicit or implicit means by applied threat or covert force. The fact a student is in custody does not, without more, demonstrate coerced consent to search. Additionally, a student's lack of knowledge of his or her right to refuse does not, in and of itself, render the consent involuntary. Whether or not an individual's student, an individual student's consent was voluntary or coerced will depend on the totality of the circumstances in which it was obtained. To document a student's consent to a search, see the attached sample consent search form, which I addressed earlier." So, I can't address the police aspect of it, or the legal aspect of it, but by the words that were written in the AG's Search and Seizure manual, we took that to mean that we had to ask the student's consent to search first. And if they refused, it didn't mean we could not search them. It did mean that we needed to make sure to document their refusal, and then we would proceed with a two-to-10-day and a hearing for, unless, a two-to-10-day hearing to determine what the outcome would be, unless, of course, it was an immediately, an immediate threat that needed to be addressed. That is the way I interpreted that, and that's the way I interpreted the AG's document.
So, I'm wondering if there's a way that we can just kind of clarify, because I'm looking, if you go back up to Paragraph C, Mr. Novelli, third line, well, it starts on the second, "In the discharge of that responsibility, school authorities may search the person, property, or vehicle of the student with or without the student's consent, whenever they reasonably suspect that the search is required." So, I feel like it's a little wishy-washy, if consent is required, if it's not required, what, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
So, I think, however, you can best clarify that.
I'll add, and this is Paul. Requesting consent is one thing, and even police officers, I think, will do this sometimes, and they can jump in and correct me if I'm wrong. But even if they have probable cause, they may still ask, "Is it all right?" And then, you know, if they say no, they're like, "Well, I'm going to execute on probable cause," and, you know, list probable cause. And I think we can always say, "Will you give consent for me to look in your bag?" And if they say no, then they're, you know, you say, "Well, I have, you know, a tip that you have such and such in your bag. It's credible," and you, you know, cite whatever you want. And then, based on reasonable suspicion, I'm going to conduct a search. It might, it's easier and better if you can get consent. And I'll take it from that angle. So, I'm not going to say getting consent is necessarily wrong. It might be the first step, but if they're resisting, you still have reasonable suspicion that you can fall back on.
Mr. Gibbs, that's exactly the framework that we have trained the schools on, that it is consent is just part of the first discussion. If you have reasonable suspicion, and, you know, again, depending on the situation, you may continue with the search, even if the student doesn't agree. It's the starting point of trying to be as collaborative as possible when tackling the issue.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. All right. So, Mr. Novelli, are you, do you feel good on what the concern is there, and have an idea as to how you fix it?
Yes, ma'am. So, you're asking for some clarity between Paragraph C and H on the subject of consent, asking for it first, and then, if you have reasonable suspicion, moving forward if needed. You suggested that we include the word "a" or "the" in front of "school authorities" at one right here. And I think, going back to Ms. Duskovich's request and what Dr. Sullivan said, am I hearing that the board would like to see something in this Paragraph I, perhaps, that says that the administration will notify the parents afterwards?
I think you've got it.
Okay. Okay.
And then I just have one last question that is just of curiosity's sake. In item J, what is the, uh, reason for the word "individualized"?
I'll say, uh, you cannot say, "We're going to test every person that wants to come to X event."
Okay.
That you don't have reasonable suspicion. You can't say, "Everybody's getting tested." Um, you can say, "If they're exhibiting evidence of consumption," or somebody said, "Hey, I was on this bus on the way to prom with these kids, and they were all drinking."
Okay.
Then you have individualized reasonable suspicion to hold them and call your SRO and say, "Let's test them."
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. All right. Board members, are there any additional questions on policy 5771 before we move on? All right. Thank you, Ms. Moore, Mr. Novelli, and Dr. Sullivan for getting us through that one. We will move on to policy 77, I apologize, 7440.01.
All right. 7440.01, um, is actually, uh, replacing and is, the title is actually changing to "Video Surveillance and Electronic Monitoring." And... So we have Neola's, uh, suggested language, which we are, uh, predominantly adopting for this area. This first part was the old language of what used to be 7440.01, Protection of Personnel and Property. These are found elsewhere in policy. And so we have, basically in this case, what you see in black is, uh, Neola suggested language, and then we modified it in some of these locations with, uh, what you see in red and underlined. So as we go through that, um, what questions might the board have?
Uh, Ms. Deskovic, we'll start with you first on this one. Any questions or comments on this policy?
No, no questions.
All right. Ms. McDougal, any questions on this one?
No questions.
Super, Mr. Susan?
Just real quick, um, does this, does this surveillance and electronic monitoring, are we giving the intent that we're allowing this inside the classrooms or just in general common areas? Mr. Novelli?
So I'm looking through, but the intent is not in classrooms.
Okay.
This is in the general areas.
Sure. I mean, and that's, that's great. That's all. As long as the intent for the surveillance and electronic monitoring was not in the classrooms, that's all. All right. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Ms. Campbell, any comments or questions on this policy?
I do. Um, Mr. Novelli, if you can go to F and G, um, I, these talk about the FERPA rights, and if I'm reading this correctly, it says that parents, um, whose student is charged, whatever, would not be able to view the videos if it shows the face of another student. And the same thing in G, that staff who may be dealing with disciplinary measures will also not be able to view the videos if it, you know, shows the, because of FERPA. Uh, my concern is, if I'm reading that correctly, is we've used videos before in, for example, expulsion hearings, um, where the parents are there, the student who's charged is there, and I'm just wondering how, that sounds like that's changing what we are doing. Am I reading that correctly?
All right. Um, well, my understanding, and, uh, I will yield to Paul in a second, but my understanding is that a parent or student in paragraph F or a staff member in paragraph G can view relevant portions of the video recording that has to do with what that person is being charged with. They don't have the freedom to just look through the entire video long before, long after, and see all these other things. It's none of their business, but they do have the ability to see this relevant portion. And while they're watching that, they cannot in any way record that. Um, but I will yield to Paul for the legal definition of all that.
Yeah, this, Paul, um, that's correct. They, they get to view, and my understanding is our practice is we allow them to view recordings. We do not give them copies of recordings without a subpoena. So if they have an attorney, they can subpoena the actual copy of it. Um, and the same with staff, they would not be able to view the, or they would not be able to get an actual recorded, a copy of the recording, but they can view it. And, uh, I know this has come up in not even, not just discipline, but even, uh, ESE proceedings with due process where they're requesting copies. We say, "Well, we just need a subpoena." If they get us a subpoena, then they get a copy of the video. They do not get to take it with them or make it at the school.
Okay. Okay. I just want to make sure, 'cause it, 'cause that part that says, um, they can view the relevant portions of, provided that viewing the recording does not violate state and/or federal law, i.e., you know, privacy rights.
Right.
So it doesn't violate those laws for them to view the video, even if, if another student's face is shown in the video.
No, no. If you had a group fight of 10 kids in the cafeteria, each of those parents with their kid could come in and view the video of the, at actual fight. If they, those 10 got into a fight, and then two minutes later, another fight broke out, they don't get to watch the other fight.
Gotcha. Thank you. And, um, okay, nope, that was it, 'cause my other question was, where is all the environmental health, fire drill, and inspection stuff going? But I saw, actually, some of it got moved to another policy we're looking at. So I'm good. Thank you, Ms. Belford.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, Mr. Novelli, I just have one, I guess, quirky question. If you can go down to K.
K. All right. There you go.
Can you tell me why we have this in the policy and who is taking all of the time to track all of this?
Great quirky question. I like that. Uh, this was part of Neola's, um, recommendation, recommended, uh, language, and, uh, I would be okay with that removed, but, uh, let's talk about it.
Mr. Gibbs, do you have any concerns with that not being included in the policy?
Um, it's, I'm sure it's being tracked, at least in some form or fashion. Whoever's doing disciplinary matters likely knows when requests have come in. I would have to see if it's a requirement of some sort by reviewing all those statutes cited there, make sure it's not said, it doesn't say we have an obligation to track it in some form. Um, I just can't recall off the top of my head. Other than that, I have no, no problem with it coming out.
Ms. Belford, can I add one thing to that discussion?
Absolutely.
When we have an OCR complaint, uh, one of the first things they ask is, "Do we have a policy and did we follow it? And do we have a procedure and did we follow it?" And then typically, if we don't have either one of those, they ask us to then address that, to add to policy or add to procedure. Um, I can, I could foresee, um, the use of, of, as, as Paul said, on OCR complaints, we often get requests for video. I can see if this goes up to an OCR complaint or a due process complaint, asking those two questions. So it, it perhaps is better left in there and, and we figure out a process to meet it than to take it out. Um, or, or we wait for an OCR complaint. I just wanted to, uh, add to the discussion.
So if, Ms. Moore, if I could just, um, ask a clarifying question.
Sure.
You anticipate that with an OCR complaint, they would ask if the superintendent is reviewing that this is occurring and if it is being reported to the board?
Um, with any OCR complaint, they, they typically ask the same two questions. And the questions are, whatever it is that's being disputed. So if the dispute was that a video had been misused or misshared, or if somebody had access that shouldn't, whatever it is, um, they will ask two questions. Do we have a, a video policy and did we follow it? And do we have procedures surrounding the use and viewing of videos and did we follow it? So I, I can't, you know, foresee into the future. I just am, uh, getting used to what OCR complaints and due process complaints yield, and it's typically those two questions. And, and all they really want to know is, "Do we have policy and procedure and are we following it?" And if not, we have to take corrective action.
Okay. My only concern with it, and, and I will certainly welcome additional board member input, my only concern with it is that, um, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with us making sure that the policy is being adhered to, and I'm sure that there is some tracking process at the school level. Um, but for the superintendent to conduct a review and for it to have to be reported to the board, um, I, I just, I feel like that's adding an, another task that personally, I, if we get to the point that it's being reported to the board, every single thing that's taking place in every single school to ensure that every policy is being provided, I think that's nightmarish. So, um, that, that's just kind of my thought on it. Board members, do you want to weigh in on that? Mr. Susan?
No, 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 no. No, I'm good. Thank you.
Ms. McDougal, any thoughts on that?
You know, I don't, I see where you're talking, what you're talking about, Ms. Belford, but I, I wonder if there's just like, when you say periodically, what does that mean? It won't be every single time. Um, so I, I, I think, I think we'd be okay with leaving this in here.
Okay. Ms. Deskovic?
Oh, I'm good. I mean, if, whatever, I don't think it's pressing periodically when, you know, what is that? It's kind of vague. I, whatever Ms. Moore wants to do on this one, I'm, I don't have strong opinions.
Okay. Ms. Campbell, you good?
Yeah, I'm not really, I've, I'm not really feeling either way.
Okay. Super. Then, Mr. Novelli, I think that wraps up 7440.01, and we can move on to 8406.
All right. What, uh, what section did we conclude for K then? Are we...
We're gonna leave it just like it is.
Just leave it? Okay.
Yep.
All right. Next up is 8406. Uh, 8406 may sound familiar, and that's because we, uh, did this revision, uh, last June. But since then, uh, Neola has provided some additional, uh, guidance, and so we have taken that guidance and, uh, implemented it. And, uh, mostly what this means is, uh, providing some very specific information about who you're gonna call when you have a security problem. Questions for the board?
Thank you, Mr. Novelli. Ms. McDougal, any questions on this policy?
No, I don't have any questions on this particular policy.
Awesome. Thanks. Mr. Susan?
No, I'm okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Campbell?
I'm good.
And Ms. Deskovic?
I'm good.
All right. That was record time, Mr. Novelli. I have no questions either. So I think we can wrap up 8406 and move on to 8410.
All right. I will add that, uh, Ms. Campbell had pointed out, uh, in the introduction that we had incorrectly originally said, uh, that this was new policy, and it's not, it's revised. It was new last June. So thank you, Ms. Campbell, for finding that.
And Ms. Belford, may I just say something? I know. I'm sorry. I said I didn't have...
Yep.
I just wonder about the details in here. I saw the Neola template, and it left places to fill out phone numbers and such. Um, but usually we try to keep our policies a little bit more vague in case things change. I'm guessing our phone number won't change anytime soon, but like the P3 app, uh, you know, we'll have to go through a whole policy revision process. Are we required, Mr. Novelli, to have these laid out in such detail?
Well, um, again, I'll yield to Paul, but that was exactly our thinking last June. And, um, we had been, um, more generic. If you recall, back here, we said utilizing the Mobile Suspicious Activity Reporting Tool. We were very general in the way we said it back then for exactly the reasons you just stated. Then Neola, uh, suggested that we be more specific. They wanted, uh, Fortify Florida in there. Uh, obviously, that's in state law. Whenever we say Fortify Florida, we also like to put Speak Out out there because we depend so heavily on Speak Out. Uh, Paul?
Yeah, I was, uh, trying to recall if, uh, 1006 is the one. I know at some point they added some requirements for specificity. I was just trying to run through the statute to see if this was one of them. But I can let everybody know on that one.
Yeah. I mean, even, I say our phone number's not gonna change, but guess what? That extension did just change. We got a new system and had to add 11. I just, you know, that, that just seems strange to have such detail.
Yeah. There, there are some policy or statutes that say you have to identify specifically who someone is supposed to contact, so it's not unheard of. I just can't recall if that was one of the statutes that did that.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
So, Mr. Gibbs, in that situation, would a change to the extension or a change in the name of the contact person be a technical change that would not require it to go through the policy revision process?
I would argue it is.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not changing any details or information as far as relevant. We're just saying this is the proper or the new number because we adopted a new phone system or something, so I would chalk it up as a technical.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. All right. Any additional comments, questions, concerns on 8406? All right. Mr. Novelli, I think this time we can really move on to 8401.
Very good. So 8410, 8410, um... We had some additional language recommended by Neola that's down in this area here, uh, requires staff to report unsafe, potential harmful, dangerous, violent, criminal activities. And we also made a slight modification to the first paragraph, and so that was the purpose for this change. However, Ms. McDougal has made a comment about the word counselor, and I believe she met, uh, the paragraph C where we see it about three times, and whether or not, um, social workers should be included. Is that right, Ms. McDougal?
That's correct. I just wanted to make sure we weren't limiting, um, because I can't believe that just counselors are on the crisis team.
All right. And Chris Moore, what say you?
Uh, yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I think, uh, I think that, that's appropriate.
So on 8410 in paragraph C where it says counselor, we might do a slash social worker. Would that work?
Yeah, yes.
I think I see it three times in that paragraph, so we'll make the adjustment.
Just the appropriate terminology. I know there says school-based counselor in there some places and just counselor the other place. It is school counselor slash social worker would be appropriate.
School counselor slash social worker.
Yes, please.
We'll make that adjustment. Ms. Belford?
All right. Mr. Susan, any questions or comments on this policy?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Awesome. Ms. Campbell?
I'm, I'm good.
Thank you. And Ms. Deskovic?
I'm good.
Excellent. Ms. McDougal?
I'm good. That was the only thing I questioned.
Awesome. And I'm good with this one as well, Mr. Novelli. So back to you.
All right. So we'll move on to 8410 dot 01. And, uh, this is a very short, uh, particular policy, and we took Neola language, but then we added this section, uh, about the SEOP, which is very Brevard, uh, specific. And, um, we also added the very important points here about the District's Act of Assailant Response Procedures.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Campbell, any questions or concerns about this policy?
No, but I like short policies.
Me too.
All right. Ms. ... All right, Ms. Duskovich?
I'm good.
Excellent. Ms. McDougall?
I'm good with this, too.
And Mr. Susan?
Yes, I'm good. Sorry about the delay. I'm always unmuting myself, so I apologize.
No worries, you're good. All right, I'm good as well, Mr. Novelli. Moving on to last but not least, 8420.
All right, 8420. We had some Neola recommended language that they asked us to consider changing, which we'll see in here. There's also quite a bit of, again, we get into specifics again, that Neola asked us to include in here in this long section B about emergency response agencies, and we put in the specific agencies for those different things. So all that's new language. I do have to point out, I found something just today in this, and I'd like Brandon and Brian especially to chime in on this, but when we originally worked on this document together, and we've been delayed for obvious reasons here in getting to the board's session, but when we originally worked on this document, we understood that there was a bill going through in Tallahassee that was being recommended by the Marjorie Stoneman-Douglas Commission that was going to change the number of drills for the 2021 school year. And so we had left out a phrase in paragraph J, fully anticipating that bill to have gone through, that would have changed the number of drills for next year. I understand at this point is that bill did not go through, and for the 2021 school year, will have the same language that we had before. And so the phrase that Neola suggested here, that we thought we were being smart and not putting in, perhaps we need to include now, right here, inserting the phrase "at least as often as other emergency drills," which is the current language. And so I would ask for those gentlemen's opinion along with Paul at this point.
I agree with that addition. That is what the statute currently says.
Brian or Brandon?
Yeah, we have no issue with it. Until they come out with the language and they pass the bill, we don't have a crystal ball, so.
Thank you.
Robin, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I think the developmentally appropriate and age-appropriate procedures was part of the same bill. Is that correct, or no?
A good point. But I thought those were things that we wanted to try to do anyway. Is that correct, in my assumption?
I feel absolutely certain of that. I just want to make sure that, I mean, that is, that is going to be a task to redo our procedures, and I wanted to just be upfront that I don't think that, I think it was all part of the same statute, but I'm game. I would love to work with you on that.
So, Brian and Brandon, is that something that we can work with Chris, and when we develop our particular kinds of drills, make sure that they are developmentally appropriate, like elementary versus secondary?
Yeah, we all anticipated these changes coming anyway. So I think we already got some stuff that we've been researching on, but yeah, we can definitely work together.
Okay. Very good. All right, Ms. Belford?
And I'll add on that developmentally appropriate part of this, Paul, again. It is in the current statute as well, that they are supposed to be developmentally appropriate. So it is current language.
Thank you, Paul. Bingo. Good.
All right. So I have lost track of which board member started last, so I'm just going to go with Ms. McDougall. Any concerns or questions on this policy?
No, I'm okay with this. Thanks.
Excellent. Mr. Susan? Mr. Susan?
Hey, sorry, Ms. Thedy just popped in. I am, Dr. Thedy, I'm sorry. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Campbell?
Yeah, this is, this is little, but can we, down at 3C, I'll have to pull it back up. When we have the list of things that we're going, you know, the, they have to provide, providing for the following, everything's a noun except for "C." Can we just rearrange the wording of that?
Where are you located?
Number three. This is, this is a Ms. Belford specialty.
Okay.
But it says, you know, we have emergency preparedness, the procedures that provide for the following, verification, health and safety of students, and then
Embrace.
time, and minute disruption, you know, all that. And then we have embrace as a collaborative effort with it. So make that a noun, and I'll be happy.
Oh, okay, got it. Thank you.
And if you don't, I'll still be okay.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell, for catching that. Ms. Duskovich?
I'm good.
All right, and I am good as well, Mr. Novelli. So I believe if there's nothing further, then we can adjourn this work session.
That, there's nothing further. Thank you, Ms. Belford.
All right, thank you, everyone. Have a great day.